Here.
Mrs. Sintenhardt?
Here.
Ms. Maxson?
Here.
Ms. Lawson?
Here.
Ms. Rollman?
Mrs. Farthing, would you please say a question?
... United States of America, and as we rely on our resistance, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice are...
Mrs. Carver?
Fernando Lee.
I practiced actually before the evening, so sorry for the delay. Didn't I practice, Fernando, or my witness?
Hello. Okay, thank you so much. Well, good evening and welcome to Pleasant Hill. My name is Kristy Farthing, I'm the principal here at Pleasant Hill. And this is Kathy Bosie, she serves as both the director for the joint for the district and has other administrative responsibilities here at Pleasant Hill as well. On behalf of the entire Pleasant Hill community, we'd like to go ahead and thank the Board of Education for your continued support and all you do for our community. Without you, none of this would be possible, so thank you so very much. Yes, I wanted to kind of turn everyone's attention this way, so I apologize if I'm going to have to turn in your seats there. Each and every single year here at Pleasant Hill, and this is only my second year, but last year we had gone ahead and we had the theme "One Team, One Goal." We thought that would be extremely appropriate, being that the Black Hawks are as successful as they are. This year, our theme, as you can see, is "Committed to Excellence," and we wanted to go ahead and share with you the excellence that occurs every minute of every day here at Pleasant Hill, so that's the purpose of our presentation this evening. The group of staff that you see there are just an amazing group of people that come to work every single day with one thing in mind, and it's how to go ahead and reach the needs of every single child here at Pleasant Hill. They're an extremely great group of people to go ahead and work with. As part of our excellence in action, we've posted our top five rocks posters, and each of you has a copy in front of you there, and there's one posted up here on the screen as well. These posters are throughout our entire building, and they highlight our areas of focus, okay? As Kathy and I both conduct our daily walkthroughs, whether it be informal observations or formal observations, these are the top five things that we're looking for in our classrooms. And you'll see that many of these things are also district initiatives as well, the first of which being daily structured math talk, second in guided reading or flexible grouping, the next is the gradual release of "I do it, we do it, you do it." Targets being posted or verbally shared with students, and then PLCs having those data-driven conversations. The last, interesting on the right-hand side there, is professional development that we're going to discuss throughout the night here, that we're going ahead and introduce to the staff throughout the course of the year to help support those initiatives that are stated about. The two areas of professional development that we're focusing in on are the CAGEN structures and SIA. So, and we'll get to sharing a little bit more about that in a little bit. On our next slide here, you'll see that we're going to talk a little bit more depth about daily structured math talk. We started having conversations with our staff literally day one on the institute day regarding daily structured math talk. What is daily structured math talk? Well, it supports productive student-to-student interaction, increasing the capacity for students to articulate and clarify their math thinking. Structured math talk increases the student accountability and the engagement, which that in turn leads to increased student achievement. When we're looking at this particular chart here, this is an anchor chart that's used in one of our kindergarten classrooms, and you'll see that there's anchor charts in every single classroom throughout our building. These anchor charts that are within each classroom support the daily structured math talk that's occurring. What you see posted there are the expectations of how students are to interact with one another as they're engaging in that structured math talk. So you can see at kindergarten, there's obviously not only the words there, but also visuals to help our kindergarten learners who aren't at the reading stage yet. So they're to sit crisscross from one another, eye to eye, have that eye contact, one friend talks, one's listening, and then they switch roles. Here's an example of students in one of our kindergarten classrooms, this is in Miss Youngblood's room, and the students had to go ahead and talk about what happened to the monkeys on each page within the story, the five little monkeys jumping on bed, with the idea being that the pattern was minus one on each. As you can see, the students are following the expected behaviors that were set forth by the classroom teacher. They're sitting crisscross, they have that eye contact, one child's talking while the other child's listening, and then they switch roles. Here's yet another example in one of our second grade classrooms, where students were going ahead and discussing why the number they each selected was an odd number. Now, sometimes sentence frames are used, and tonight you're going to hear us talk about how we support our EL learners when they're in the general classroom. Sentence frames are used as prompts, and they can help our EL students, as well as our struggling math students, clarify their thinking without them to go ahead and worry about how to go ahead and get started, because oftentimes, they're trying to think of how they want to go ahead and word something. So this takes that worry out of that. The other thing you see up there is that the bottom says today's vocabulary. One of the big things in each of our math lessons is that teachers for each math lesson are identifying important vocabulary, and they themselves are modeling it throughout the lesson. The carryover then in the expectation is that when students are going ahead and interacting with one another during structured math talk, that they too then are using that math vocabulary. So it's solidifying their understanding and making sure that they're actually comprehending what it is that that word means. At our recent faculty meeting, we had teams go ahead and they used the strategy of mind mapping, and here's a picture of our fifth grade team collaborating and discussing what structured math talk looks like at their grade level. The idea was that they go ahead, get it down on paper, and to go ahead and share it out with staff. This allows the faculty to go ahead and see what does structured math talk look like at kindergarten, first, second, third, fourth, and fifth and up, and also gave staff the opportunity to go ahead and ask one another any questions that they may have, is this working, sorry, any questions that they may have regarding how to implement a gap at grade level. And here's a picture of the high school specials coming collectively, and they do then figure out how it works in their small instructional setting.
Another addition that's a lot in the box, this is the guided reading, and I love being on this seriously, because it's a whole different thing. It's up here. Okay, I have it. So guided reading is important, because what it does is it looks at data and teaches group children according to what their instructional reading level is, and then they support that development by increasing the river of the text and the challenge of the skills, because the ultimate goal is understanding the delivery, the counter dimension. So as you can see, that's an important part of our literacy program. I have a few pictures, it's really hard to capture, though it gets a little high and is still photo, so we invite you to come and watch some of our guided reading groups if you ever have a moment. But here is Mr. Laiter, he's a fourth grade teacher, and the students were reading about the food chain, the informational piece of text, and he was, they were talking about the main idea. Main idea is one of our school improvement goals, so we're going to see that throughout our discussion tonight. But he's working with a small group of children all the way down the same level, so it's just a little bit challenging for them. Here is another picture of the fourth grade class from a list teacher had been working on how text features help in common and informational text. And what you can see to help the students is there's a piece of text on the left, and the instruction is being supported with what we call a graph of organizing, so that they can organize their thoughts and keep track of them. Ms. Drip, second grade, was reading an informational piece called "Stolen," and here she's working with students, identifying the main idea of the text in the guided reading group. Key details, main idea, distinguishing between the two. "I do it, we do it, you do it," is a really important instructional technique and strategy, and it releases the responsibility, so at the very beginning, the responsibility is on the teaching, but you want to gradually release it so that the students can demonstrate that they understand everything independently. So the idea is the part when the teacher is conducting the direct instruction, the "we" do it is when we practice together, the guiding practice, so the teacher and the students are solving something together. And then finally, the students demonstrate that skill independently. Another one of our top rocks. Targets posted in the classroom where they're really shared, takes the guesswork out of what the students are learning, they don't have to infer, they don't have to guess, it's not a secret. So on the left, you will see a target that was posted in the first grade classroom. They were comparing and contrasting bags and birds, and they had read a story about birds the day before, and then bats, and now they were able to put it all together. On the right-hand side, you're going to see targets posted from the fourth grade classroom. There's a reading target and a math target. That particular day, students were using information from the table to create a bar graph, and then they had to solve real-world problems about bridges from that data table. They also, it was important that they labeled it properly, so if you look at the math targets, it shares both pieces. Ms. Clark, I showed you just a close-up of one of her students before with the graph of organizing. It's hard to see, but she, right above her, she has a little square, and the interesting pieces even for her guided reading group, she shares the target with the students. So then again, these are students that might need a lot of repetition, but she makes sure that they understand what they are going to be getting from that guided reading group lesson that does. One of our goals is of courses to have students taking responsibility for the learning, because Hannah's to be a speech study, and what was very interesting, after feedback from the teacher, the students then went over the whole targets for the day. So we wanted to share that, because that's really taken even the stuff for... PLCs have been in the district now, and of course that's a professional learning community for several years, and they're data-driven discussions. What you are seeing here in these photos are our first grade team toward the beginning of the year, they were identifying what were the essential standards that they wanted to focus on as trimester. They were leading students, and they were developing a kind form of assessment, so that they could tell how the grade level was progressing. You'll notice two analyze our first grade teachers, we have five first grade teachers. We also have a bilingual teacher, we require specialists joining different grade levels to become a part of the team, whether they're resource, specialized, bilingual, and everybody reading, everybody's a part of the team. Professional development.
So to go ahead and support our building initiatives and support the staff that's reaching every child, we chose our professional development based off of conversations that we had with staff last year, both during our building problem solving meetings and during our school improvement meetings. Two things came up consistently, one was student engagement, and the second being, how can we go ahead and close that achievement gap? So one of the things that we looked at was, all right, what's out there, and what do we think is going to, going to help us go ahead and reach both goals? So, before summer, we identified staff members from each grade level that would be willing to go ahead and attend a two-day workshop on CAGEN cooperative learning. There's a lot of research out there that supports using CAGEN structures within the classroom, and how it assists with closing that student achievement gap. So we have staff from every grade level attend the two-day workshop, the intent was that they come back to the building the following year and assist with providing professional development throughout the course of the year, with that train-the-train or model. So you might be sitting here thinking, what is CAGEN, or you may be very familiar with CAGEN. CAGEN Cooperative Learning is a brain-based cooperative learning and a multiple intelligence structural program that improves student engagement and leads to increased student achievement. Dr. Spencer Cagan herself is a clinical psychologist, who is also an internationally acclaimed researcher, presenter, and on the, CAGEN's actually been around for a very long time. So what is CAGEN? Well, there's four basic principles, and these are the acronym PIs. The P stands for positive interdependence, learning task promotes teamwork, everyone's on the same side, there's no winners, there's no losers, we're all working together. The I stands for individual accountability, each student is accountable for an individual contribution, no one's sitting it out, so everyone's got to bring something to the table. E stands for equal participation, students participate equally. And then the S stands for simultaneous interaction, student engagement goes up to 100% in the classroom. In the CAGEN classroom, nonparticipation is not an option. So what we have for you now is a clip, and I do have to apologize upfront, because it's quite bouncy, so hopefully you don't get seasick or have any kind of emotions like that, so please forgive me on that. But what you're going to go ahead and see in the very beginning is students with, getting the information are more of a traditional setting, and then you're going to see as it goes on, how it can work in a CAGEN-style classroom, so. Who can tell me what you remember or know about Nomads or Early Man? What do you remember? Jack?
That there are persons who lose a place to play.
Shay? Okay, somebody who doesn't settle. Shane? Great, gatherers hunters, awesome. Right now, I want you to think about what you know or remember, what we've learned about Nomads, hunters, gathers, early man, all of the things that we've learned so far. Talking with your shoulder partner, we're going to spend 20 seconds each sharing everything we can or remember about Nomads or Early Man. The person who's going to go first is the person sitting closest to the front of the room. If you're in a group of three, I will tell you when we switch to the next group, you'll have a few extra seconds, all right? Raise your hand if you're going first. All right, time starts now. Zero, please. Okay, 20 seconds is up, next group you will have 30 seconds, group of three, I'll tell you when you have 15, and you'll switch. Go. All right, zero, please. So as you can see in the very beginning of that video clip, we didn't have students 100% engaged, because the teacher was doing all of the talking, some kids were staring off, they weren't 100% engaged, they weren't all paying attention, they weren't all motivated. As you saw, as the CAGEN structure was implemented, there was that 100% participation, students were excited to share with one another. These structures also make learning more fun, not only for the students, but for the teacher. So as I stated before, when you're looking at this, the structures can increase academic achievement, ethnic relations, enhance self-esteem, create a harmonious classroom environment, reduce those discipline problems, and develop social skills and character development. Throughout the course of the year, we're going to be focusing specifically on fine central CAGEN structures, the rally robin, round robin, rally coach, the stand-up, hand-up pair, and time to pair or share. Each of these structures address the following: social skills, communication skills, knowledge building, procedural learning, thinking skills, and processing information. These functions strictly align with our district initiatives and goals of standards mastery and collaboration and creativity, as well as addressing the other social emotional learning standards.
Another initiative that's not really new to the district, but it's newer to Pleasant Hill, has something called SIA, and it stands for Shelter, Constructional, Masturbation Protocol. And we got the graphics that changed, we did a little bit of digging into the past report cards, and in 1995, we had 0% second language learners for Pleasant Hill, and on the 2014 report card, it was reported as 15% second language learners. So as our population is growing, it's presenting a different way of needing to instruct students, and our teachers need some development, how to academically support students who are second language learners. So SIA, again, just like the CAGEN, there was a teacher selected to be trained over the summer, she attended, and another one of our bilingual teachers had some other training. So together, they're putting together professional development, and on our Professional Development Tuesday, related to SIA, they had their first round about two weeks ago, and one of the things that they addressed was something called sentence frames, which you saw on example of writing. But what's really important is it takes away some of the hesitation about how do I start? You can really assess whether or not they understood the concepts by starting the sentence for them. Part of the training will include other strategies that help support students in the regular classroom. They are getting some credit outside through either the second bilingual or AEL services, but the sentence frames is just one of the examples I'm going to show you from the speech classroom. On the right-hand side, Mrs. Rollman always asks her students three questions before they read, it's her ups and slips, to see, to really kind of formatively figure out whether or not the students understood what was happening during that session. So one of them is, what was the target, what do you want today, and then how can I use this outside of the speech classroom? Well, what she did after hearing the professional development, she went back on the left-hand side, or the sentence frame, because again, she said, gosh, I wouldn't hope they understood what we were doing, I don't want to have to hesitate on how to start the conversation. So you'll see over there, the three different sentence frames, and one of them was, today I'm terrible at this, today I learned, and I can use this outside of the classroom, or please this through the classroom. So then they can share what they will do. So a lot of times, it's from words, or it's from a teacher using social studies, and coming back with words that might add certain sense. As our professional development continues, we have four other sessions planned throughout the year. The teachers will be modeling, or teach with other strategies that they will be able to use within their classroom, and then talk really about the advantages of reviewing academic vocabulary, because again, vocabulary has been proven to be one of the biggest ways to close the achievement gap. For example, if a student's asked to compare a mountain of volcanoes, they might know the concepts, but if they don't understand the verb repair, they won't be able to do the task. We want to thank you for coming, and also, again, this is the staff that we're very proud of, because every day they've worked with our students and our community to help them succeed, committed to excellence. We invite you to come visit anytime that you can, lots and lots of different staff in here at Pleasant Hill. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Carver, and Mrs. Bosie, for the presentation. Would you give my best to Mr. Laiter for his old scout leader? And Pleasant Hill is one of my downtown schools, and I want to tell you that I attended the EL family night, we had the largest turnout ever for the EL family night, it was wonderful. And then I was here for Pro Kids, the Pro Kids Assembly, and then saw Mrs. Carver get tied up and magically untied, and that night, so it was a wonderful night, so thank you very much. And if you have any of your staff here, they are welcome to leave, they can stay and listen to the rest of our meeting, they're welcome to do that, but I have a feeling they might not leave if they want, if they have the opportunity. So this is the opportunity. Board members, are there any modifications to the agenda that anyone would like to make? Having none of the public comments. The opportunity to speak of boards provided by members of the board who have questions or comments on the agenda item, the board appreciates hearing from stakeholders who validate their thoughts and questions. The board strives to make the best decisions for the district, and public input, the variety of interviews is very helpful. The board must protect the stability in accordance with this meeting, please be respectful for the duties of the board and the democratic process of the comments tonight. Please use the microphones, get your name, and when you are district president, and rest of the comments of the board, limit your comments to three minutes, please be factual, courteous, and do not make statements that are personally disrespectful or condescending to members of the board or staff. If you feel what your matter needs to be discussed in more detail, please retain the board's chance to share presentative comments to us. See that we only have one speaker tonight for comments on the agenda items, and that's Mrs. Jennifer Long.
Hello, I am Jennifer Long, I am the district president, and I am currently the co-president of the McCorville PTA Council. And I'm just here to talk about the gifts. I just wanted to let you know how much money the PTAs across the district, there are ninety PTAs in our district, and last year, we gifted to the school about $140,000 in different items, between media, different things, computers, books, different things like that. And the amount of money that we spent on programs for the students at the schools is $257,000. So we brought in about $400,000 for the school's, this last year, which I think is a great amount. And then, one of the things that we do with the money is we, all the councils come, all PTAs come together and make a council, and the council will do different things, and hosting parent seminars and different things. We are hosting one on Monday night, Palcoa, for those of you with kids. It is for junior high kids and up, but parents of younger kids are welcome to come, and it really deals with issues that are facing our teens today, like bullying and different things. It's a really motivational one, Chris has been to it before, and she brought it to Monroe many years ago, and it's coming back, so it's on Monday night at seven o'clock in Monroe. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Dr. Shulley?
Thank you, Jennifer, thank you. You know, we talk to the PTA Council regularly, and we're great partners to the district, and we appreciate not just the gifts that you give us in terms of money and resources, but the human capital you provide for us as well, so please make sure you thank the council for this. Couple of things I just wanted to mention on board under my report tonight, in your green folder, there are a number of different items that we've included for you. One, and I unfortunately am probably not going to go in the exact order that they are in your folder, but I just want to mention to you the things that are in the folder. There's a black folder inside the green folder, we're playing a folder game tonight. The black folder has copies of both the presentation and giving kind of the roadshow version of the state of the schools presentation, as well as the corresponding materials that have gone along with it. We had an opportunity this morning to speak to the AM Rotary and noon to the noon Rotary, which has led to a couple of other Rotary presentations, we've got the local, like the official breakfast tomorrow, as well as a number of other engagements coming up to really spread the word about the district's focus on master facility planning, future construction and technology, and the continuity of building community partnerships, the fine work that you're doing. So I just thought you might be interested in seeing those materials, thank you to those who they were able to join us out of this morning at noon for the presentation, and hopefully you'll get a chance to do that at some point. Also in your folder, I've included a copy of the initial roster for the Citizens Advisory Committee, our first meeting with Citizens Advisory. Our first meeting with Citizens Advisory Committee is scheduled for Wednesday, October the 21st. It's a week from now. We're going to be meeting at the SSC at seven o'clock on the 21st. And again, I'm excited that we have three, thirty-one applicants for the Citizens Advisory Committee. Again, I think kind of a blend of some community members without kids yet in schools, some community members with kids at varying levels of our school district, as well as a number of individuals that no longer have children in our schools. So yeah, that's just an initial roster and I think as, kind of as we work through this inaugural year of CAC, you can welcome to join us for the meetings if you have an opportunity to do it. But I think one of the things that we'll want to do through the year is really kind of look at, you know, what gaps we might think exist in the roster of CAC and, you know, how we want to recruit to close those gaps moving into future years. But again, I'm really excited about the response that we got from that. Also inside of your folder is a report to the membership from the Illinois Association of School Boards. So just a reminder that this report to the membership includes all of the, all of the, I don't know if I was going to say the word, all of the resolutions, thank you, the resolutions that will be in front of the membership at their, at the fall conference. So it would be very, very helpful between now and your member meetings for you to take a look at those resolutions. And I think typically what's worked well in the past is if there are any that you have really significant concern about, that's kind of what we want to hear at the next meeting. I believe Barb will be the board delegate at the membership assembly. So we will have that on the next agenda, just to see if there are any which we have concern about and may not want to support. Go to that. There is in your folder a copy of a case study that was written on District 200 and our SEL goals. So Joanne and the SEL leadership team have been working with Castle as we've worked through the implementation of a multi-year plan to address and implement social emotional learning within the district. And actually, this case study, so we're one of the bigger districts that Castle has partnered with, and really the case study is about how we've built a model that financially is sustainable. I think the concern around implementation of SEL programs has often been the cost. And so really, the case study highlights, you know, how we've done that and built a model that we believe will be sustainable over time. So Joanne and the SEL team think we work on this. And then, the last thing that I think I have for you is there's a copy of a letter from Debbie Klein and Emerson School just inviting you to an event on October the 29th. It is a fundraising event that they are doing for St. Baldry's. I had an opportunity, I think I showed this earlier, to attend an assembly earlier in the year at Emerson because one of their students is one of the five St. Baldry's ambassadors this year. And so that's a, that's a cause. And many of our schools certainly support, but Emerson's got an event coming up that they want to make sure you got to mind. And that's it.
Thank you, Dr. Shulley. We now move to the consent agenda. And the consent agenda includes the following items. One, acceptance of gift to Pleasant Hill Elementary School. Two, acceptance of gift to Wheaton North High School Athletic Department. Three, approval of revised policies, 2.150 Board Committees and 2.220 Board Education Reboot. Four, approval of revised policy, 2.260 Uniform Reviews. Five, approval of post for 2016, 2017 district calendar for public review and comment. Six, approval of Blackboard Connect renewal. Seven, approval of state of completion emergency generator for the SSC. Eight, approval of change orders for 2015 paving projects at six schools. Nine, approval of bills payable and payroll. Ten, approval of personnel reports to include employment, resignation, retirement, leave of the absence of administrative, certifying, classified, and non-reneamed staff. And eleven, approval of minutes, September 16, 2015 open meeting, September 18, 2015 special meeting, and approval of destroy recordings of closed sessions prior to May 2014 as allowable by law. Are there any items the board members want in the consent agenda? Hearing none. Dr. Shulley, is there any information from the staff on any of these items?
I don't believe so. Board members, I haven't seen you answer questions on a number of the items, but I think we were really answered.
Are there any questions or comments in the boardroom as we move through the items? I'd like to call out our staff for the paving projects coming in under budget for this past summer and fall. And including the emergency generator project at the school service. Nice work. And again, we are very thankful for the gifts for Pleasant Hill Elementary and for the Wheaton North High School Athletic Department. I have a motion and a second consent agenda. Moved by Mrs. Crack?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Conover. Please call the board.
Mrs. Cracktree?
Yes.
Mrs. Haggard?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mrs. Madison?
Yes.
Mrs. Interhart?
Yes.
Mr. Gagnon?
Yes.
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
More to the questions. We now move to action items. The first action item is the approval of copper lease agreement agreement. Dr. Shulley?
Absolutely. I'm going to introduce Rod Mack, who's going to make a couple of introductory comments, really what I think Rod's going to just share with the board and a couple of introductory slides, less about the specific lease agreement itself, more about why we're doing this. So this was a part of the technology plan that was presented in the spring, earlier in the spring of this year. And so, Rod, I'm going to go for you.
Thank you, Dr. Shulley. This is, there's a presentation back here, just a few slides, just to go over really what is this proposal, if we're looking to get, refresh the copiers and kind of change our print management solution moving forward. Again, this wasn't the massive tech plan, which was originally written for two years in this part of the, this year, we're looking at doing just mainly the elementary buildings for a print management solution to, again, our aging printers and the number of printers that we have out there in the district. Currently, we have about thirty-one copiers. These are the things that are the size of like a mini cooper in the building to make things into all the paper. We currently own twelve and nineteen of them are coming off lease end. On top of those, we have about seven hundred printers around the district. Those are both network and local, so ones that anyone can print to and ones that might just be sitting next to someone's desk. Those are not under contract with our lease last person or last contract company. We broke that contract and have been buying toner and servicing them ourselves. We have been able to do it under budget and actually saving money that way, but it becomes labor intensive. We currently don't track monitor or control print jobs either. We know how much paper goes through, we know how many clicks go through, we don't know what's being sent. Think of the accidental, I'd like to print the one little recipe and five hundred pages print out before you get to the printer to stop it, those kinds of little accidental things, you know, we can't stop those. Currently, all of these are managed within the tech budget, under three real line items, one for equipment, which we use for the lease cost, one for the service, which is really the click charge that we use, and then we also have another line item for toner that we use to buy for the printers and the inkjetters as well. So what we're looking at doing is, you know, really wide copy print management and the solution we're looking at is a Canon solution. We've been a Canon product user for as long as I've been here. Jeff Everett's in the audience, I think as long as Jeff Everett's been here, we've been a Canon provider. He's done a lot of legwork on this, but some of the really big things that we get out of this, print management is a secure printing, which again, as we're talking about printing things that might have student information on them, secure printing, nothing prints unless you're standing there to pick it up. It won't print off in the room in the second hallway down on the corner, you've got to run and get it. There is a lot less waste because again, things won't print unless you're standing there, can't make accidental prints. Follow me printing is a new solution, that's what we call a follow me printing. A person can hit print here, you can pick it up at any device in the district that's connected to this system. So any of the copiers, any of the printers, anywhere, you can send it from the SSC and pick it up, you can run to South and you get there permanently, you don't have to wait in long lines behind people with copiers. There is rules-based printing. This will allow us to control some of the printing from people taking a sheet of paper, going to do meeting with thirty and knowing that the copier's too far away, printing thirty on a printer is a lot more expensive when we pay almost seven cents compared to sending it to a copier where you pay a lot less. So we can stop some of the misuse of printing. There's definitely less devices, that seven hundred printers will drop down considerably. We're looking currently at total uniflow type things in the next few years to bring us all to probably around one hundred and fifty devices with the big copiers included. So really dropping that down drastically. And then, without that many devices, there's a lot less time doing repairs. So there is a big up case to going with print management. Really how it works, you print really to the cloud. That was, was not really called the cloud because the cloud scares a lot of people. But you really do print, right now, you print from a printer to a device and you go to the printer and pick it up. In this type of an environment, you print up and then when you walk to the device, you pull it back down. So you can get it from anywhere, it will disappear if you don't print it. Again, the person has to be standing there, so we eliminate waste, it also has a secured piece, and then we can do the rule-based. It will allow us to get multiple different types of devices in there, the big fleet models, the big mini cooper's are cheaper, they're meant to do things cheaper. Someone trying to print something to a device that costs more per click, it would actually suggest, go here. Every job that we can move something that prints cheaper saves us money. One of the big financial benefits, a lot of statistics out there where people do these things, we're seeing about a twenty percent reduction in overall printing costs, not just click or anything. What I did is put some figures in here to just show you what we're looking at doing. Just the rate reduction from what we currently play, pay for our clicks to the copiers and to the printers alone, just that rate reduction. If we continue to print, let's use the easy number, thirty million. If we print thirty million again next year, we're still seeing savings of ten thousand just because this newer equipment, it can come in a little cheaper. If we were to reduce that also by printing ten percent less, which again, could go down twenty percent, we could see eighteen thousand savings across the district. The other thing that is not really factored into that click rate is the paper. We pay about point zero zero five nine per sheet of paper that goes to printers or copiers and everything. Again, an easy estimated ten percent reduction will save the district twenty thousand. That's money the schools will see if they buy their own paper. So again, it's a share, it's not just all the tech budgets are going to save all the money. The other thing that would happen is, this is just a simple number, again, we could drop five hundred devices, but for two hundred and fifty devices, this is a very, probably soft estimate, probably is a little bit higher, but even if we were to save, we'd get fifty five dollars of energy savings, use an online calculator based on our models to figure this all out, we'd save thirteen thousand of energy savings a year just by getting new ones in there and removing just a minimum of two hundred and fifty. If we removed another, you know, two hundred and fifty in the next year, when we do the middle of the high schools, we'd see a savings there as well. So how we got here, and part of this plan, again, if you notice, it did say that we were looking at multifunctional bikes and fail inventory, it was a big thing we heard last year in our vision 2018 talks, that, look, these things are eight, nine years old, they're getting expensive, the copiers, you know, still five years at the end of their lease end. At that time, the company we were working with, you know, proposed, well, let's just refresh everything now, you know, refresh the copiers and everything, we'd be buying a little bit more, we could probably get a better price point to work this whole thing out. So it really kind of made us look at, well, let's look at what the whole package does instead of just the fifty-seven mini units that we're going to go and replace printers. We then thought it'd be better, let's contact some other vendors. We need to make this a little, you know, competitive environment then to where it's not just us selecting our current vendor. We really were, really do like the Canon products and Uniflow products to manage all of this. So one of the big reasons why I put that on there is the ability to print and improve the cloud-based printing. We now have more Chromebooks than we do laptops in the district. And no one can print from their Chromebooks. That's why I carried two, no kidding. It's, they can't print from this, and it is something that's becoming, we have to, as we get into this digital environment, yes, we want to save on people, but at the same time, we still have to have the ability, where most students are working when they do need to print that capability. So we really like the Canon and Uniflow products. Out of that, I believe you guys all have a copy of the proposals that were sent in, approved in business solutions, it was the best proposal based on price and the references that we checked and everything. We like to, you know, build a good relationship with them moving forward, so. Any questions?
I've got a question. You know, we're going to spend, the way I read this, we have the cost of the leasing of like six hundred thousand dollars. And we're going to pay ten thousand a month, so it's like a six-year lease, I guess?
No, it's a six-year.
Five, five years, okay. I'm five years out, five years back, five years, I guess I'm wondering, you know, when I incorporate the whole technology change that may be happening, have we given consideration to the fact that we may not print it? That we would do it through media and we're transitioning only on screens as we move forward? You know, I would ask that to consider this self-termament because I think we're going to be heading that way basically, is that we won't use paper. And also, what is our total cost of all printed paper, leases, et cetera?
The current cost of this, or the current cost that we have now on the line?
Well, mostly in that budget, in that budget, we have a technology component. And of that technology component, there's equipment leasing for printing, there's paper, there's, you know, a lot of things that support it. How many numbers that, if you said something, there's something?
The three numbers that I say that line item encompasses all of our printing, copying and everything now is the price of the line items of three hundred and twenty-five thousand is my budget every each year. And that dropped about twenty thousand from the previous year.
And this leaves whether a hundred and twenty?
I'm sorry.
Does that mean the lease on a hundred and twenty?
All of this still fits into what the current is, though we know increase and people to do all of this. And again, we'll start to realize the savings. And to answer your point about the reduction in printing, I think going from seven hundred printers down to the price of one hundred and fifty, we're always going to need copiers in this. Even five years out, we're probably still going to need copiers for whatever we are, that this would move us. It's a, we don't pay for what we don't click, so we still have to buy the product. If we reduce fifty percent, eighty percent, that's a lot less we'll be paying for the click charge, if you remember looking at that chart. But yeah, the lease will be a fixed rate for sixty months. Then we own it at the end.
I guess, finally, you know, again, I didn't hear you answer, but moving forward to technology, we see that we'll be still printing in the future, I guess, right, my bigger concern?
I would say for the next few years, yes. I, you know, I don't know, we'd love to go to a paperless free world, but I, you know, I don't know if we're, if education is moving that fast yet. I still think as education changes, there's still going to be a lot of things handed in electronically and graded and everything electronically. There'll still be the pages at some of the levels that people need to hand out to thirty kids to have them fill out if they're not answering everything online. There still will be paper prints in education.
So Rod, if I'm understanding your answers to Mr. Madison's questions, we're, so I think what you're, if I have a vision of this, it is, we need so many printers just because of geography. So in other words, if I want to print something, whether I want to print fifty copies or one copy, I'd have to have a printer that's somewhat close to my, where I'm doing my work. Okay, so we're going to have all these printers, no matter what, these hundred and fifty printers. And I guess my question is, is that, is the reduction in printers going to be, I mean, have we looked at, you know, the burden that might cause, are we still going to be geographically adequate? I don't want to hear complaints about, you know, I have to walk fifty feet further to get there, you know?
Yeah, I'm tying this into the health call of the district. No, it's a joke, sorry. The, no, yeah, and one nice thing is within year or two of this is, we've already thought of that, is this, you know, the next six months of this, will you be able to guide what's happened at the elementaries? You know, we have a geometric, you know, with about a minute walk to anything to make sure that it's all, we can make changes into that. There's need to be a step two of this plan, which again, based on estimates and foreseeing, will still be able to fit in this budget and in that three twenty-five budget moving forward as other things fall off. So there is not an increase in this, we'll definitely see a savings. And yes, we don't want anyone having to, you know, sprint all the way down to the end of the hall to find something. We will be able to move those and, and restate them as, as patterns happen and, and jobs change, things like that, yes.
Okay, so then, sorry, so, so if I understand the savings on down the road, I mean, the equipment cost will still be there and we'll need that equipment for the next five years, but the savings you're referring to, it, it, it is really due to the usage, so we'll be using less toner, less paper, fewer, and fewer click charges. So we may realize more savings. If, if we implement a technology faster so that we do less printing, we'll still see a savings even though we still have to have that equipment there just because we have to have a printer somewhere in case something needs to, kind of, that.
And Barbara Connaughton's gonna make it. I lived through this transition in, in my previous district and, uh, I'm not gonna promise you that you're not gonna hear a complaint. So we are gonna do this and do it in the right way, really with an eye toward reducing the amount of papers of those, kind of, the rules around printing are gonna have to continue to, you know, to, to give restrictive containment within the district office. We already had some conversations that, you know, well, who's still gonna really need, you know, a printer? And there're gonna be a lot of people that are still gonna make a case to Kristi and the rest of our principals saying, well, I, I need it, I need it. And, and we're gonna have to be firm in that, which means for a little while, there're gonna be some complaints. But, but in my experience, after a couple of months, that, that goes away. This becomes the, the new norm and then candidly people just start to realize a lot of what they were printing, what they were printing. It, it's easy when it's right in your room. It, it's a little harder when you gotta, you do have to walk a little bit. I really need that right now.
Just to clarify a couple things. First off, we're gonna use, these are really copy machines on prints, I mean, and the, what do you think in conventional terms? Is that not correct?
They're really small copiers. They use copy, copy scan and fax. They're, but, you know, they're kind of a little more the printer size, but yeah, but they're not the big full-size copiers you think of when you walk up, you know, and it tinkles, it's not something like that. It's a tabletop size that can make copies as well, I guess.
Okay, and you mentioned that we could monitor the cost of, of usage, but we don't. Is there any thought of doing that? I, you know, there might be, you know, on a, on a bicycle basis of, you know, one that gets way out of line. I don't wanna make this a nickel and dime event, but I, I would think that we could monitor that in some way and see if there is, uh, uh, everybody's right to participate in a way they should be.
Yeah, we can, we can monitor what is sent, we can't see who is sending right now. So we, I, I know which schools are high, which ones are not. The reporting of this Uniflow will be able to tell us. And again, you're right, we're not pointing fingers, but it is something we can share with the administration to say, hey, is all of this needed? You know, you have a few high users, you know, and some, it's just like everything else we do in education, if you can focus on a few, a lot of times you can, you know, decrease that learning gap or whatever to, to help us save overall. The new system will allow us to, to track all that and share that information, yes.
I think we should do that. And then the last thing, you've referred to the term click charge. Could you explain that a little bit?
Yeah, click charges, every page that comes across, we pay for it. Every, so if you make one copy, you're paying, you collaborate for what that copy is.
That's on top.
It's fractions and fractions of pennies.
That's on top of the equipment we used to pay for.
Correct, we already do that now. That click charge covers the toner, the staples, the supplies, the maintenance and the five years working of that equipment. So to pay for the service of the equipment, we pay for every sheet of paper that goes through. We have been doing that consistently and then moving forward, the click charge is less, so.
Rod, uh, is the Uniflow, uh, software included or is that another cost on top of that? Is it firmware, is it software or, and, and is that even a separate cost or is it bundled in as well?
It, it is part of the lease price of the, uh, whatever the monthly charge of that lease price, we own it at the end of five years, yes.
And Rod, as I understand, we have three bidders for this, um, proposal, three, three different entities that submitted bids. And we've checked the references of the low bidder, we're completely satisfied with the, um, feedback we've gotten from those references. And in fact, we've done more investigation beyond the references.
Uh, just two practical questions. Does this happen right now in the middle school year versus for next school?
This was always our plan was to do this. It's sometime when people were in the transition so we could do the training. We don't wanna switch all printers and copiers and have everybody come back in August as everything else is changing. We've always planned on kind of staging this out into the fall time. So this will happen, we hope by year's end, by, and, end of December, we've got them all in. We don't plan on turning on the rules and all of that stuff right away. We plan on watching and piecing those pieces in to where the system utilizes, you know, to where we can sit and watch and make sure everybody's comfortable for it. Things start popping up and so maybe we should do that.
Well, you know, in, in my company, we set up and seen some very significant cost savings by, um, automatically forcing two set copies to just print that, that, is that functioning? I mean, is that part of it?
Do we anticipate a, even less of any coming for the high school when we, when we're looking to, to implement? I'm, I'm just thinking in mind, in my own house, I don't know that I've seen five pieces of paper come home. My, my children turn in everything on turnitin.com and I've already edited, I don't, I don't, you don't see paper anymore, really, I don't, for my high school students. So are we thinking that for the high school, we might even do less than what we currently are doing?
Uh, part of getting Uniflow installed now and, and the replacement of the copiers in the high school, we'll install Uniflow monitoring across the district as a whole. So we will be able to watch all of the usage over the springtime for both the middle and the high school to make suggestions based on actually in the location where most of the printing habits are removed and pick the appropriate devices and, and work with proven on saying, this is probably what you need without the first amendment, yes.
Any other questions or comments? I ask for a motion in a second to approve the county lease of maybe some, moved by Ms. Entehar.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Craftry. Would you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Entehar?
Yes.
Mrs. Craftry?
Yes.
Mr. Gabe Dunn?
Yes.
Mrs. Baddison?
Yes.
Mrs. Cato?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mr. Norman?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next action items and approval of phase three authorization contract with Perkins and Will, Dr. Schuler. And since, uh, September thirtieth, I committed the whole meeting, the board, uh, heard a, uh, an updated report, uh, from the Perkins and Will team on the, uh, phase one, two outcomes of the facility master plan. And so, uh, we're here, here tonight as an action item to move forward with, with approval to continue that work, uh, in phase three. And you wanna point out, uh, that what we've provided for you tonight is a paper copy of that, that summary report that we sent you with a number of pages, I know. And, and so, uh, we, we did, uh, provide a, a, a paper copy, you know, for you to, to look through. And, and I, I do wanna, just one thing I wanna point out about, kind of, that, that draft set results, a lot of what's in there is really the work that's gonna take place in phase three. So it's, you know, it's a lot of data and, uh, and feedback that came out of this. So I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Farley just to, uh, share a couple of comments about what's to come in, in phase three and, uh, really did not plan a, a, a big presentation around this tonight as you add that on September the third. So, Mr. Farley?
Thank you, Dr. Schuler. Uh, as we've mentioned, the phase one, two work was completed and a presentation was gonna have the previous committee all be in. It's really, uh, now the spring war moving to phase three, which is, uh, the community engagement sessions. And, uh, the board's aware that, uh, uh, we had scheduled, uh, sessions in the summer, second, January twentieth, and February seventeenth to have additional discussions. And really, we, uh, we're going to, uh, be reviewing established digital, right, and master plans and the findings of that were, were found in each campus, obviously Jefferson and, uh, Childman Center is part of that discussion as well. Uh, the information's gonna be gathered through those community engagement sessions to breed, breed structural solutions. That will be brought back to the Board of Education. Uh, we have, uh, the final one is done in February, we plan to be back and it's gonna be the whole beginning that month. And then we looked for moving to phase four, which is the final planning for the document and oversight for that. So today we're asking for the board to move us up to, uh, phase three, uh, planning, which will be the community's, like, we have to.
Any questions or comments? And a reminder that we did have this discussion at the, uh, September thirtieth, board, we do the whole meeting, so any questions, comments, thoughts?
Just a, just a quick comment. I, um, I had the opportunity about a week and a half ago to go to two of my three schools. And as I was walking through the schools, I was actually now looking for this type of thing. And I think it would be good for all of us as we're walking through and visiting our schools to kind of be thinking about, for example, um, what do we spread first? Was in their, our last thing. And, I mean, they're trying to do the absolute best they can with a very small space, you know, but it's little standing stations to try to do some exploration. And, and so I think when I was walking through the building and I was thinking about what we're doing with this plan, it gave me a very different look. Um, and if, I thought if, if we could all visit our buildings, and I think the other thing is visiting them when children are in there, I know that doesn't always happen and be able to do with our, our schedules, but if we can make a point of doing that, because the second building I visited was Jefferson. And I've had the opportunity to be in all of our buildings on many different occasions, but not always when children are there. And I got a very different view when I walked through the buildings with, with, with children there and, and was able to see the obstacles that some of the facilities are causing in terms of instruction. Um, I, I, I witnessed when I was, was at Jefferson, just the opportunity to go to the bathroom and they have chairs lined up in the hallway because the line is so long and there's only one opportunity for one child to be in there at a time. And, and how much instruction time is, is, is being, you know, not used in, in, in the best of capacity. So I guess what I'm asking is, is as we are visiting our schools, maybe we can, I don't know how we go about doing it, but maybe we can do a little bit of a little portback and if somebody is witnessing something that, you know, maybe all of the world should see, maybe we have that opportunity and, and we try to, to go on and consider. I just think it's a good idea to, as we're walking through these buildings and we're, I don't know, we're going to our doctors, we're just kind of thinking this in mind. Cause I had a different, much different view in some of the buildings I've been in on many occasions and had a very different view as I put that out in my head.
Any other thoughts or comments?
So let me just kind of summarize and underscore what Bill said. We, we're moving from the stage of getting input, making observations about the buildings, creating summaries of the needs to the stage of kind of developing and refining concepts. So this is where we begin to put the, the guiding principles, the needs, the vision into place and figure out how to apply them within the constraints of each individual building. And especially the early childhood program, um, primarily House of Jefferson, we're gonna see a lot of different approaches for that. And I think the, the unique thing about the way we set this up is, is this is gonna be shared multiple times with the community. So there's gonna be reviews with the oversight committee, with the building level teams, with individual school buildings, three specific opportunities of community engagement for parent, for parents, other citizens to come and provide feedback and share their thoughts. So, you know, as I kind of articulated, this process at the very beginning, this is gonna be a master plan that is developed with the community. It's not gonna be a, a plan about, you know, vacuum and then told to the community what the situation is. So we've got a great opportunity during the next two or three months to make this be a comprehensive plan. I should also say that the capital facility plan that we've had in place since, uh, for several years is also gonna be one of these inputs. I'm sure that will be considered as part of this, of these concepts. So this is the stage where the vision becomes to be seen, so. Um, I think the process is laying out very well. I, I think, um, as Farley said, sometime in the spring, margin, time, some timeframe is when we'll get to the conclusion of this stuff. So it's gonna be an exciting time over the next, um, three or four months, I, I predict.
Any other comments or thoughts? I haven't, I haven't got through the entire, uh, draft, um, what that Perkins and Will's put together, about halfway through. But as Chris said, I've gone through a number of these buildings here and then saw with a new eye some of the, the issues that were identified here. So I'm very anxious to see this become a final draft and, uh, provide an executive summary for many of us that can put our arms around this. Um, seeing no further discussion, uh, I ask for a motion in a second to approve phase three authorization of the contract with Perkins and Will. Some movement. Moved by Mr. Paulson?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Entehar. Mrs. Entehar, would you please call the roll, or the roll?
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mrs. Entehar?
Yes.
Mrs. Craftry?
Yes.
Mrs. Cato?
Yes.
Mr. Gabe Dunn?
No.
Mr. Matheson?
Uh, I, I'm a little torn on this one. I, I, I think it's a little premature. Uh, you know, I like that I did the planning, you know, I, I just, I'm trying to tie all this together economically and put it together and, you know, according to my, I think this is a little bit premature, so I, I prefer to have a, like, economic need, all this put together, kind of, but I know what this is getting, but I, I, I am gonna go know what this plan is. And I, I'm a little concerned about the three more sessions of the, uh, engagement groups, you know, the cost of doing that again. You know, I think we had said with some people at the last time, it's just, to me, I do have, I think, plan dictating to me versus going to that last one. I, I, I will struggle with the, the concept of doing this.
Mr. Norman?
Yes. Motion passes. Uh, written reports, we filed a receipt of the copy of the monthly financial reports. And we all received a copy of the, um, four year request that was submitted to the previous grant. And reports from board members, we have new reports from board members, please.
I'll just comment that a few just went to the, um, morning lottery this morning and saw the state of the district report. I love the fact that it's a very comprehensive community engagement effort to share, share our stories and challenges in, in future with members of the community, not just parents who have kids in the schools. There was, um, several wide range demographics at the, at the meeting this morning, so it's good to see.
I think just briefly, I, I know Jennifer mentioned the, the block presentation and I, I would love it if the more that we can get the word out there to, to get attendance. I, I did have the opportunity to see it four years ago. Um, I, I was still extremely moved by, I, I've never seen it naturally and it's a sample that, um, it's, it's, it's teens presenting to teens tough issues and, um, the more we can get that information out there about this free opportunity, um, for parents and our middle school and high school students to attend. I can send out little clips to, you know, to Dr. Schuler if he wants to pass it out to all of us, but if we can spread the word of that, um, I think that would be good, especially because the, the PTA council is providing that, a free judge for all of our, our districts.
Any other reports to board members? Are you?
I just wanna say, uh, go on the noon rowery. Um, um, Dr. Schuler again made a presentation saying roughly the same presentation as the noon rowery and it was very well received and that it gets some, um, good questions and, um, uh, lots, lots of good discussions. So I appreciate that you've taken on the road and I think you've done an excellent job, um, keeping it concise and yet getting out the information that is necessary to get out there. So, uh, that's, uh, it's good, it's a good thing that we're doing there.
Just a brief report from President. I bet a couple weeks ago with Bryce Tam, we mainly talked about setting up a, um, dinner with board members, for those who aren't participating, I said we would, uh, set those up. I'm glad to see that they've been initiated. And also the doctor spoke this morning to PTA council, um, gave a little briefing on how this is the board agenda and all the board meetings are organized, assumed they are organized. Uh, and I appreciated that opportunity. We have a meeting, a breakfast tomorrow morning, seven thirty at Whittier?
Eight o'clock.
Eight o'clock, oh. You'll be there seven thirty, but eight o'clock tomorrow morning, uh, with our local municipal users. Our topics for future discussions, including student learning dashboard, curriculum updates, and a fit update on, I guess, now we have to meet the whole, like, at the end of the month. And, yeah, our meeting opening is October twenty-eighth at seven-thirty PM at the SEC.
Yeah, I was just gonna mention, Barbara and I did attend the curriculum meeting. We had one, maybe about two weeks ago, and Faith and Joanne presented to us, looking very closely at student achievement and also cultural. And I believe you're, that, that could be in the whole this month, that you're doing presentations.
One, one thing just to know really quickly, so that, I think that other topic was on attendance and kind of the dashboard metric around attendance. And coincidentally, we just received a, a joint letter that was written by, still the current Secretary of Education, Ari Dukin, for a little while longer, with, with two other secretaries within all school districts in the United States, highlighting the issues that schools have around attendance and the importance of us working hard to reduce attendance of what you call both chronic attendance and, you know, kind of the students that are, are, you know, chronic kind of attendance in school, but are missing stuff that's impacting work, so kind of highlighted what we're working on there.
Ms. Berlin, is there certain value, maybe you were touching on the changes to chat the other days, that worthy of mentioning?
Yeah, I'm glad you brought it up, thanks. Yeah, on October eighth, we had a chat at the board at Morton Road South High School. We had a couple students there, very impressive young people who came down and spoke and described the student council that Mr. Clay Bull has established to get feedback and insight and, and see what the students are thinking in various subjects, systems. African-American, multicultural, and there was a black and white, a black and orange committee as well. And they shared their thoughts with us, which was very helpful. And we had two parents who attended and brought up the topic of foreign language, which we're gonna be looking into. And it should be perhaps, a matter of future discussion, perhaps in the board meeting, where we can talk about the comments we heard at the board. Thanks for bringing that up, Sean, I appreciate that. Any public comments?
No.
Well, can I have a motion to adjourn? Moved by Mrs. Entehar. Seconded by Mrs. Catter. Oh, no.
Since it was such a quick meeting, should we have to make this a little serious, and it doesn't overlap with the working?
I will be making a motion to reschedule. Mrs. Sandow, too, please, oh, we can, oh, gosh, we're, I keep forgetting that. All in favor of adjourned, please signify by saying aye. We don't know, as we are adjourned.